Board of Education, make your meeting on Monday, October the ninth, 2023 at 5:30 PM to order. Members present are David, Brett, Kenny, Jennifer, and Susie. This time we move on to Pledge of Allegiance and Prayer by Miss Jamie Pepper.
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for bringing everyone here. I pray that everyone has safe travels and will have safe travels. Thank you for everything you've done for us, and let us just give all the glory to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time we move on to number one, regular meeting on September the eleventh, 2023. James, would you please approve the draft?
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
Question made by Brett, seconded by David to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on September the eleventh, 2023. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes, and Susie, yes. And approval of minutes from the number two special meeting on October the third, 2023. I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the October third, 2023 special board minutes.
Second.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett to approve the minutes of the special board meeting on October the third, 2023. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. So this time we move on to approval of encumbrances.
Okay, if you'll look, the first one, kind of let me go over, is two twelve, and that's airfare for our Twenty-First Century. Three of our Twenty-First Century personnel go to the National After-School Conference. They have to go to a national conference. Now, this one, they were specifically selected for our state. Twenty-First Century Director recommended our school for this. It's a DSLN conference, so we mainly are twenty percent. Michelle Moore has done a lot of stuff with that. It's just something learning network. They do a lot of stuff, so they got free, not free airfare, airfare or hotel, but free meeting registration. So it's a pretty good thing for our school.
That didn't get loaded on there?
Didn't get on there?
Uh-uh. So it's okay.
See, encumbrances.
Do you see it, Jim?
All right. The next one I'll go over is our two nineteen. It's Riverside Insights. That's for our CoGet form. And we are going to test our second graders for GT testing, just test all of them that our parents approve of it. But currently, we just go for parent recommendations, teacher recommendations. This way, all the second graders can test. Because you don't really know a lot of times, you know, this way, I think it'll give everybody a chance, because it's, you know, just because they do well in school doesn't mean they're gifted. So I think that's something we can look at for this year and see how it goes. But I think it'll be a good thing. A lot of schools are doing that now. We'll kind of see how that goes. Uh, the next one are, is two twenty-five, and that was for our cheer team when they went to state, room for them. Two twenty-six are laboratory stools for the science lab at the high school. Currently, there weren't any. They were kind of all standing up. Get them some stools. Two twenty-sevens for that same conference, and that's your room rate. And all that we paid out of the Twenty-First Century grant. Two twenty-eight is also Twenty-First Century. That's supplies for the bike club. Two thirty-three, you'll see that they can, Janet Bullard, she's our external program assessor. Each, each program has to have an external assessor each year, and you pay them five hundred dollars, and that's also through Twenty-First Century. Next page, two thirty-five, that's that Crisis Prevention Institute. That's for instructor certification for Lisa Sloan. We have to do that every couple of years, so they can basically, they can train all of our teachers for that CPI. All of our special ed teachers have to have CPIs, so if we have a trainer, it's a lot cheaper than sending everybody to get tested for that. Shout you, that is all for the general fund. Rest of them are pretty small. Any questions about any of them? Next page is their blanket payroll encumbrance. That's for, first one's for Cindy Keith when she filled in earlier in the year. PO eight zero one two one, that's for the resealing, the painting of the grade school. If we happen to have any overtime, we're going to take it out of this payroll and do that building fund, but if we need to, we can pay that out of the budget too. Apparently, we haven't had any, but we may. Uh, next one, building fund. The first one was for that, like we approved last, last meeting for the grade, grade school intercom system, and that will be paid for either out of seven ninety-three or the school security grant, one of the two. Uh, we have it for seven ninety-three just in case, you know, maybe we'll get lucky and our canopy projects come in a little bit less. We'll still have something already encumbered to cover that. Nineteen is Webster Heating and Air. That's for middle school air conditioning system that went out, and that will also be out of seven ninety-three. PO twenty is Treehawk Triarc. That's our architect, and that's out of seven ninety-five.
Is that one, is that the total amount, or is it?
And it's actually a little less than that. That's the total.
And we don't, and we, this is just encumbered, right? So we even pay, we don't pay?
No, we don't pay it all. We'll have one, about half of it coming up.
Okay.
Once you get that first stuff done, which is getting closer. Uh, twenty-one is the Cedar Creek Civil Engineering Firm, and that's to do the site survey and the geotech boring. We get that going as quick as we can, so we can get that.
Is it started yet, or no?
We're in the queue, so I, he said within a week or two. So, I mean, we need to get that done as quick as possible. It won't take very long once they get it, once you get, once you're there.
Get their board back.
Right. Like a week or two. And the next one for child nutrition, to be met, that's parts for the ovens and cafeteria equipment, and that is the encumbrances.
Make a motion to approve the encumbrances as presented. Second.
Question made by Brett, seconded by David. Jim, approve the, approve the encumbrances that's listed. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes, and Susie, yes. And this time we move on to other financial reports.
We'll look at this page. Um, big thing, and of course, you can see this in, this increase up here, one hundred thirteen thousand. Remember, in September, we did our stipend, support personnel stipend. That was eighty-nine thousand, two hundred. So without that, our increase would be twenty-four thousand, six hundred sixty-nine dollars, ninety-one cents. So that's really, with our raise, it's really pretty good. If you look, you can kind of see over here, our extra, that's kind of the, where that eighty-nine thousand, two hundred came from. And this year, without that eighty-nine, that would be about twenty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-three cents. So we're, we're still kind of a little lower than last year on our, without the stipend. Like you know, extra payroll, Melissa and I were talking this a little bit. It's all your tutoring, your Twenty-First Century after-school. So really, I mean, we don't want that too high, but also it does some good things. It's paid for with grants. But you probably, a lot of that was maybe our substitute aren't as high as they were last year. But part of that's because we don't have enough substitutes. It's not that we're just missing less. It's the substitutes. So, you know, you can kind of look at that both ways. It's good to have that extra payroll. And we like it down. You always want the bottom line to be less, but we need the tutoring. We need the after-school program. So if we have more kids, we would be increasing it, so. Kind of what I was talking about, the, the regular payroll is kind of an important one, where you go from seven hundred and eight to six hundred and eight. That's about twenty-eight thousand, so we knew the raise was going to be at least, you know, about five hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's about forty-three, forty-five thousand, so we're still less than what was budgeted for that, so we're, I think we're doing pretty good. Down here on bills, uh, you know, this month, we're down less, eighty-four thousand less than last year. I say, well, we're really, you know, saving our pennies, but we bought a bus last year, seventy-eight thousand, so that, that's the, that's the increase. But overall, we are down currently this year about thirty-five thousand, so we know next year with our regular increase, we will probably go over that and start in another way. But right now, we're, we're let, like I said, a lot of this is like that eighty-four thousand of the bus. So it's not just, you know, super saving. There's, there's reasons.
It's not excellent management?
Well, I'd like to say it was, but there's a bus. Uh, next thing you see down here, our current end of the month, two point one eight million on our general fund, one point six two four in building fund. Purchaser warrants, what that is, most of that's for the material for the canopy projects. All that building fund will be reimbursed through the seven ninety-three, except for, there's five hundred and sixty-nine dollars that was for the concrete for the ramp at grade school. But other than that, I think we're, all will be reimbursed. Child nutrition, one hundred eighty-one thousand. We're still doing pretty good there. We're, you know, now that the grade school is the only one that gets free, we're going to wait on lunch bills. That usually happens more around the end of the nine weeks of the semester, when people get their report cards, usually they get their lunch bills, so. But that is the other financial activities. Are there any questions about any of that?
Okay, this time we move on to public comment. The Board of Education invites public comment at this point in reading our meeting. A, comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy BEV dash R. No one present for that. Information items. A, superintendent report.
Okay, we have completed our first nine weeks of school. Our last day was Friday. And so we have a lot of things going on. October, first part of October, we have a lot of reports to do, state reports to do. And I'd like to go over for really our first quarter statistical report. If we go over the whole up, I just kind of tell you some bottom numbers. Uh, important was last year, at the end of the school year, we have to do an annual statistical report. Uh, we ended the year with an average daily membership, that's ADM, of one thousand, one hundred eighty point eight five. That'd be our average membership each day. Our state funding for this school year is based on that number. And it's kind of, it's awaited.
How's that trending? Is it still trending down?
It's, we're, we're going up a little bit.
Okay, that's why I was curious.
Yeah, I'm really. Positive thing. But that, and so our, that's based on that number, but at the midterm, we get a adjustment based on our first quarter. And I ran that today, and currently, our average daily membership is one thousand, two hundred twenty-one point zero nine. That's an increase of forty point two four, which is really a great deal. It's kind of spread out. It's not one class or anything, so, um, because it's, you know, based on, that your midterm adjustment's based on the highest, either your end of the year or this first quarter, we hope we will see a good midterm adjustment. It's really a positive. So it's good to see that number increasing. We hope that continues. A lot of activities going on. Softball finished the season last Thursday. They had an overall record of twenty-five and nine. Uh, we really had a great year. They made the secondary deals. We, you know, hope they make state. They played a very good photo team, but real proud of them. They did a great job. Those girls really did well. They're super talented. Uh, cheer team competed at state tournament on September twenty-first, twenty-third, and they placed fifth, which is really a great job for our kids. It was in the five A, small co-ed division, but they really did a great job. So they placed fifth in the state. Really excited. Football's five and one. They play Mul drill this week on Thursday night, and we only have the last four games are conference games, and they're real important for playoff chances. We're excited for them. I don't know if you drove by the school, high school Saturday, but it was packed. Had the one act play, and the band also had their, their contest. One act play, they ended up placing fourth, which is disappointing. The top three get to go to state, but they really did a great job. And I think they're going to do it for the public in a couple of weeks, and it's a great play, so. Recommend you come watch it. Those kids are really, you know, you see them in a, every day in school, and then you see them really competing. They're, they're pretty impressive. They do a really good job. Uh, the band, like we said, we had twelve bands from over eastern Oklahoma. And this, I didn't realize, when you host a exhibition like that, they don't actually get judged. They get kind of a critique, but they don't place. So that we're paying the judges, and we're paying, she said, it might look bad, so that's not the thing to do. But we really did drag. He said if we had, we would have been third. So they give us scores, but we don't really get to count it. And their marching band regional competitions next Wednesday, October eighteenth, McAllister. I think they perform about two thirty or three. Uh, parent-teacher conferences tomorrow, so we have a lot going on, and that's the superintendent.
This time we move on to action topics. Action topic A, public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment on past and future expenditures and the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four operational budget with board consideration to adopt the twenty-three, twenty-four operational budget as presented.
Okay, I am recommending for your approval, the annual operational budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Uh, the structure is based on statutory requirements using Oklahoma Cost Accounting System codes. And as you know, we did the estimate of needs last year. The county exercise boards approved that, and we kind of developed our budget based on the estimate of needs. So if you look at our budget, and I've done this for several years now, but it's based on the project codes, our general fund, building fund, and child nutrition fund. Project or used code, or project codes are used to track expenditures by different areas of projects. So if you look at your budget, zero, zero, zero obviously is the big one. That's your general fund. And that's for all non-categorical expenditures that we do not have to classify specifically into one of the projects below. You see all those different project numbers. A lot of that is for how we can put it in one area so we can, we can track the spending for state reports. So like projects zero, zero, one to zero, two, two is for any category expenditures that we kind of put in our code that we need to track for state reports. So for example, I'm going to throw out, say, uh, zero, two, two is E-Rate, and so we track how much money we spend through the E-Rate program. We have to send those reports in. Uh, three hundred and one to three ninety-nine are state programs that require specialized reporting for state funds or competitive grants. And, you know, three, three, three is for state textbooks. So basically, we get seventy-seven thousand, ninety-three dollars, forty-eight cents from the state. That has to be spent on textbooks, so if it, if we put in there, and we can put this code in there, three, 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 we know that's what we spend on textbooks. It's easy to bring up. It's easy to track what you're spending on. It's easy to show the state that's what we did. Uh, next one, five hundred and one to five ninety-nine are your, kind of your federal programs, your usual, that's title one, two, four. The Twenty-First Century Grant, Indian Aid, which is title six. Uh, J O M for title, Indian Aid is title five, excuse me. Also title six. So those are the five hundred codes for federal funds. Project code six hundred and six, six oh one to six nine nine are also for federal funds, but they're specifically for special education funds. So you look through all that, it's all for special education funds. Uh, the seven hundreds are for other federal programs, and that's our Esra funds and Chocktaw Summer School. It's for non-typical or one-time federal funds. And it's kind of the same thing with our building fund. If you look at our building fund, zero, 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 that's kind of for our general, general expenditures. The project code is still the same. It's just a different fund. Uh, the Red Bud, that's the three, that's that state fund. Esra two, as you see, is the seven hundreds, and Esra three. Those are the, kind of the one-time grant, federal grant funds. Child nutrition, uh, same way, organized by those funds, the state fund. You can see the federal funds is kind of the, the big part for. Child nutrition is through the federal side of things. Gift fund, same thing, the two hundred, two oh one through two ninety-nine. For us, it's two oh one, two ten, two twelve are for gifts or endowment. That's the Henderson Scholarships, Love Bottling, and Dale Bragg. Are there any questions over that? It's a very similar budget to last year, except for on three seventy-six, we also included our school resource officer grant. Other than that, numbers are pretty close to last year.
It's pretty much the same. That was my question.
Pretty much the same. It's actually about, uh, it's about fifty-five thousand more, and that's because that's school resource officer. But remember, like, the general fund on our estimate of needs is about fourteen, five, what we expect, what it get, but we're not going to, what we can spend, eleven, nine, oh nine. We can't go over this budget without coming back to you and asking. We'd, never, but we won't forget. And so basically, it's very similar to last year, and I would recommend this budget for approval.
I think most would approve the budget for the twenty twenty, twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to approve the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four operational budget. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, discussion and the cost of the board action to pass the twenty twenty-four annual school election resolution.
Hey, this is something we have to do each year, so we can have an election, a school board election. Basically, what this says is the dates for the election, and what it says, it states that we will have a primary election on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, if three or more candidates file for this position. We'll have a general election on April second, two thousand twenty-four, if only two candidates for a position. If no candidate in the primary election received more than fifty percent. So if only two, or if no candidate received more than fifty percent, we will have a general election on April second. Uh, this election for board position number four, and the resolution also explains the required qualifications for board position and for what voters are eligible to vote in the election. Basically, it just kind of gives us the date and allows us to hold a school board election.
Does the school pay for the entire election, not only the election board officials?
I think we pay for them.
They, uh, their wages would, for the colored places.
Twenty-five thousand is about three thousand dollars.
Yeah, normally, yeah.
Yeah. At one time, it may have gone up since then, but.
Pretty close with that.
Make a motion to pass the twenty twenty-four annual school board election resolution.
I'll second. Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer to approve the, uh, board, uh, to the twenty twenty-four annual school election resolution. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of the district gifted talented education plan for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Okay, this is a similar plan to last year. Basically, it just outlines the basic policies and procedures for our gifted and talented program. It kind of breaks it down. There's two ways to qualify. If you're a top three percent on any national standardized test of intellectual ability, you automatically qualify. Or you can, they call it multi-criteria. You can qualify as intellectually gifted, academically gifted, visual, performing arts, talented, creative thinking, and leadership abilities. I recommend, recommendations for this program to be made by educators, parents, and advisory council members. The three percent, I mean, we could have everybody, if everybody in our school qualified, you could, we could get, actually get paid for that. But if, on the other ones where it's, uh, the multi, we can get paid for eight percent of our student population. Other than that, it's after eight percent, you can still be gifted, but we don't get paid. But that's the two ways to qualify for it.
Make a motion to approve the district gifted and talented education plan for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I'll second.
Question made by Brett, seconded by David to approve the district gifted talented education plan for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, consideration of approval of FFA attending the FFA, FFA National Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana on November the first and the fourth, twenty twenty-three. Students will be transported by the fourteen, by fourteen passenger school bus. Also, approval to have an FFA banner sale fundraiser to help finance this trip.
Okay, this is for the FFA to go to Indianapolis and take the set of the fourteen passenger school bus, cross state lines, and attend the National FFA Convention on November first or the fourth. Uh, at this convention, they will go on stage and be recognized as a national three-star chapter. That's really a pretty good deal for our program. It takes a lot of work to get there, so we're really proud of them for that. And they also request approval for the banner sale fundraiser to help finance the trip. So like I said, it's a significant accomplishment. They get to go across the stage, and so I would ask that you approve this trip and the fundraiser to help finance the trip.
Make most would approve that, that they attending the National Conference, National Convention in Indianapolis and the fundraiser.
I'll second. Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve the FFA attending the FFA National Convention in Indianapolis, Indianapolis, Indiana on November first and the fourth, twenty twenty-three. Students will be transported by fourteen passenger school bus and the fundraiser, the FFA banner sale fundraiser to help finance the trip. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of authorizing Superintendent Tom Kettles to submit letter of intent for opioid abatement grant award application.
Okay, this is through the Attorney General's Office, I think it was, not sure how many years ago, but they got that opioid settlement. And this is the grant that, uh, this, basically what I'm asking for is to get approval to send a letter of intent to the opioid abatement board to apply for grant fund, grant funds from the opioid settlement funds. And the problem with this, we really don't even know what we can use the grant funds for.
That's going to be my question.
But to have a reply, we have to send this letter of intent by, they moved it to October twenty-fifth. Originally, it was in September. We didn't have a board meeting. I think nobody else did. I sent it in just as me, but I think they really want board approval, so we'll go, I'll send another one in. But we, like I said, we don't even know what we can get, what we pay for it, but if we want to try, we have to send this letter of intent. Basically, we'll send a letter, we intend to apply, and then we'll find out what we can do with it.
How much was it for? Twenty-three thousand?
Well, it's twenty-three million, and depending on how many, it's for, I mean, a lot of different entities can apply for it.
Okay, so we just get a portion of the twenty-three.
If we can get the grant. We certainly want to try.
So we don't specify how much we're requesting?
No, we just say, hey, we're going to.
Twenty-three million?
Yes. That's a dumb question. Sorry, I'm, I'm a rookie.
I think I know what you could do with that.
Make a motion to authorize Superintendent Tom Kettles to submit a letter of intent for opioid abatement grant award application.
I'll second. Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to authorize Superintendent Tom Kettles to submit a letter of intent for opioid abatement grant award application. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic F, consideration of proposal for civil engineering services for Stidger Elementary School.
Hey, this is for contract with Cedar Creek Civil Engineering Firm to provide civil engineering services for construction plans and site specs for the classroom addition project, yep, elementary school. So this Cedar Creek, uh, they're the ones that are going to do our geotech boring and our site survey.
And that's, that's, I guess that's all separate than the project manager stuff?
Yeah, everybody wants their.
Yeah, I get it.
Make a motion to approve the proposal for civil engineering services for the Stidger Elementary School.
I'll second. Question made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer to have authorized, um, Cedar Creek for the civil engineering services for the Stidger Elementary School. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. And action topic G, consideration of construction management, I think, for Stidger Elementary and the elementary projects.
So we know we had four responses to our RFP for construction management, classroom addition. Uh, we heard from each of the firms last Tuesday, so we kind of decided now which company we'd like to contract with. You know, I'll, I'll leave it. My personal would be Stout, drag on my second, but I'd like to just, your votes what matters. Kind of get your thoughts on that.
That was my part, same thing, yeah.
Yeah, I thought they, I mean, they all had good presentations, and based on what I heard, probably any of them could do it. But, you know, the, based on the bids, um, Stout would be my recommendation to, I guess.
I make a motion that we contract with Stout Construction for the construction management company for the Stidger Elementary projects. Second.
Question made by David, seconded by Kenny to contract with Stout Construction Management Company for Stidger Elementary projects. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David? Oh, I'm sorry, you did, didn't you? I wrote that down. Oh, sorry, you did, and I wrote that down, I'm sorry. David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
And Susie, yes.
Did you say yes? Okay. At this time, we move on to the executive session. A proposed executive session to discuss an act upon the following business pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma Statute three oh seven B, one of the open meeting act. Number one, discussion of resignation of Jordan Smith, Assistant Band Director, effective September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Number two, discussion to employ an Assistant Band Director for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Make a motion to convene an executive session. Second.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by David, at six o'clock P M to convene an executive session. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Return open session.
Second.
Question made at six oh nine P M, by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny, to return the board to open session. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Members present during executive session were David Huggins, Eric Arm, Kenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, Susan White, Superintendent Tom Kettles was also present, no motions nor votes were taken.
I make a motion, we accept the resignation of Jordan Smith, Assistant Band Director, effective September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the resignation of Jordan Smith, Assistant Band Director, effective September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion, we approve the employment of Ryan Stamper as Assistant Band Director for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second. Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to employ Ryan Stamper as Assistant Band Director for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Any new business?
No new business.